So, sir John?
No. I don't put some dirt in my wife's mouth.
Okay. Chair?
Good afternoon and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Smith Falls Council. Today is Monday, November 10th. I'm councillor Jay Brennan and I'll be chairing tonight and we have a full... Well, we're waiting on councillor Barbut, he'll be here. I'll start with the land acknowledgement. On November 10th, 2025, we acknowledged the sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Ogonkwin Anaswabi Nation. We are grateful to the Ogonkwin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Ogonkwin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all our relations together. May we care for this land and each other drawn on the strength of our mutual history, of nation building through peace and friendship and being mindful of generations to come. So, I'll call the meeting to order at 5:01 and I have a recommended motion for approval agenda that November 10th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting, meaning agenda be approved as circulated, moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor McKenna, all in favour. Okay. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest in general nature thereof? Seeing none. I have a recommended motion for approval of the minutes at the minute of October 27th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting be approved as circulated, moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Robinson, all in favour. So, we have two delegations this evening and the first one is Regional Healthcare at KHSC in Kingston. Abby McQuillam, University Hospitals Kingston Foundation, I welcome you to our council meeting.
Very much. A mic? Yep, just talk, just talk. Okay, wonderful. Well, I'm really pleased to be here this evening. Thank you very much for having me. My name's Abby McQuillam and I'm Associate Director at University Hospitals Kingston Foundation. I'm here to provide an update on the important healthcare services that are available at your Kingston hospital and a little bit about what that future looks like at KHSC. Next slide. Since the merger between KGH and Hotel Dew Hospitals in 2017, which created Kingston Health Sciences Centre, the role of our hospital has grown significantly, which today provides ambulatory and acute care to over 650,000 residents. For communities like Smith Falls, this means that even advanced specialized healthcare is accessible within a reasonable distance, avoiding travel to larger cities some of the time. This level of care is essential, especially as our region's population grows and ages, and the demand on healthcare has never been greater. Because KHSC is the regional referral centre for tertiary care, we are able to support hospitals in smaller areas, ensuring that people throughout the region can receive timely and comprehensive care when they need it most. Next slide. Running a hospital today is much more expensive than it used to be. Advances in healthcare mean that patients are living longer, which is wonderful, but it also means they often need more complex care over longer periods of time. For example, older patients might need joint replacements, heart surgeries, treatments for chronic conditions like diabetes or cancers, procedures that weren't as common or advanced a few years ago. The cost of medical technology has also increased. Hospitals now rely on cutting-edge equipment like a surgical robot and advanced diagnostic imaging, which come with huge price tags. These technologies improve patient care outcomes, there's no question, but they're extremely expensive to purchase and maintain. This is where philanthropy becomes critical, as government funding doesn't cover new equipment or facility upgrades. Donations help us acquire these critical tools, big and small, like MRIs or NICU monitors, directly improving patient care and keeping pace with modern healthcare needs. Next slide. In Ontario, a health sciences centre is more than a hospital. It's a hub for advanced care, medical education, research and specialized clinical services. At KHSC, this integrated approach allows us to deliver life-saving specialized care for patients facing the most serious and complex conditions. This means we're able to provide advanced treatment for stroke, trauma, cardiac emergencies and organ transplants. We also offer the highest level of critical care for infants and children through our Level 3 pediatric ICU. In addition, KHSC is home to the Cancer Centre of South Eastern Ontario, providing essential cancer treatments close to home. We're also leaders in minimally invasive surgery, state-of-the-art diagnostic imaging and interventional radiology, ensuring patients receive specialized, high-quality care even for the most complex medical needs. Next slide. KHSC serves South Eastern Ontario through a hub-and-spoke model, with KGH and Hotel Dew as the central hubs, supported by satellite clinics in smaller communities to provide critical care close to home. For example, dialysis services for chronic and end-stage kidney disease are available in Brockville, Smith Falls, Belleville, Picton, Napanee and Bancroft. Stroke care has also expanded with KHSC-led prevention and rehab clinics in Brockville, Perth, Smith Falls, Belleville, all staffed by KHSC neurologists. To meet local demand, KHSC doctors like ophthalmologist Dr Sharma travel to community-based clinics in areas such as Brockville, Smith Falls, Port Hope, helping to keep patients local. For residents of smaller rural communities, digital pathology at KHSC makes a significant difference in the speed and quality of their care. Instead of sending physical specimens to Kingston, your local hospital can capture detailed digital images of these tissue samples and send them to KHSC pathology instantly over a secure network. This means that pathologists with wide-ranging expertise can review and interpret these images remotely, providing a diagnosis much faster. This means implementation of treatment plans for patients at your local hospital sites. Next slide. As the region's academic hospital, KHSC serves a very wide catchment area, which includes Leeds and Grenville, Frontat County, Lennox and Addington, Hastings, the Quinte Region, as well as Lanark County. KHSC may be in Kingston, but it serves as a lifeline for families across South Eastern Ontario. Half of the people we care for come from communities outside of Kingston who rely on our hospital. This demand reflects the deep need for accessible healthcare to a growing and geographically dispersed population. Next slide. I'm going to dig a little deeper into the numbers on this next slide. With nearly 2,000 residents from Smith Falls that accessed KHSC last year, they came to the hospitals for a variety of reasons. There were 179 visits to the emergency department and over 220 inpatient visits. 185 residents required a surgical procedure in Kingston, while the Cancer Centre saw over 1,000 visits last year. However, it's quite clear that the number one reason that your residents come to KHSC is for the outpatient services, with over 6,000 visits last year. This would be for treatments in ophthalmology and cardiology, endocrinology like diabetes and pediatrics, among many others. These numbers are not huge in volume, but they're still noteworthy for a smaller community. It demonstrates that, you know, whether it's for emergency care or surgery or life-saving cancer treatment, KHSC plays a vital role in the health and wellbeing of Smith Falls. We have made a significant step forward for the future site of KGH, the first visible progress we've been able to share since 2022. The city of Kingston's decision to set aside land for KHSC's future redevelopment gives this project a home, a physical place where we can finally start to imagine what the next generation of healthcare could look like for our region. Rebuilding a place simply wasn't an option due to infrastructure limitations, but the new location provides something that our current sites simply can't, like space to grow, design flexibility and the ability to plan for modern models of care. Next slide. The next step is submitting our plans to the Ministry of Health and Infrastructure Ontario for review and funding. This is a long process. A full hospital redevelopment spans more than a decade, but early phases could begin as soon as next year. That early work includes moving certain departments, such as labs and pharmacy, to make room for immediate priorities downtown, like expanding our emergency department and adding inpatient capacity. While the timeline is long, the momentum is real. Each milestone brings us closer to a hospital that can meet the needs of a growing and aging population, not just in Kingston, but across South Eastern Ontario. And throughout this journey, our donors have been instrumental. Their generosity has sustained the planning, advocacy and groundwork that makes progress like this possible. Their continued partnership alongside our municipal and regional partners will help ensure that when the time comes to build, we are ready. Next slide. As you can see from this list, we remain focused on the care we deliver to patients today and the hospital foundation plays a critical role here too. Since the Ministry of Health does not fund hospital equipment, we are called upon to work with our generous community members and surrounding municipalities to invest in the health of our residents. We are fortunate to have support from most councils that are located within our catchment area. I'm not here to make a request to Smith Falls today, but look forward to exploring that in the future. Next slide. Delivering the best care to residents today is very different than it was a decade ago. At KHSC, our facilities, which are among the oldest hospital buildings in the country, require ongoing upkeep and we have simply run out of room. These space pressures directly contribute to longer wait times and strain our ability to meet growing demand, especially as our population ages. We know municipalities face similar challenges as they work to respond to housing needs, recruiting healthcare professionals and strengthening your local services. Meeting the healthcare needs of our region will take collaboration at every level, but together we can help ensure residents continue to receive excellent care close to home. Next slide. Even with the challenges we face, KHSC continues to deliver outstanding care and push forward with innovation. We're introducing new treatments and technologies from robotic surgery to advanced stroke interventions and we're connecting patients across the region through the new shared health information system. People in our communities are benefiting from highly specialized academic-level care right here in Ontario. And because of our strong partnerships with regional hospitals and health providers, that care is seamless from start to finish. Much of this progress is made possible by the generosity of donors and the vital support of municipalities. Together, the surrounding communities help KHSC sustain momentum and invest in the innovation that saves lives. With continued partnership, KHSC can not only respond to today's pressure, but also build the future of care a region deserves. Thank you very much for providing me with an opportunity to share an update today. If there is any questions, I'd be happy to...
Thank you, Abby, and I'll look to my colleagues for questions, comments. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, Mr Chair. It was almost eight years ago when I was running for the very first time. This question of supporting hospital funding came up by municipalities and at that time, I didn't think it was fair. I thought it was provincial responsibility and I still believe that today. However, that's a reality that we live with and when I see numbers like 20% of our municipality utilizing the former KGH. I'm open to revisiting... I know we support the first Smith Falls Regional Hospital and we've always limited and I've supported limiting either funding to Ottawa or Kingston. My thinking has evolved and with that kind of demand and the kind of expertise that our residents rely on from both Kingston and Ottawa, I'm open to council having a discussion about how we could support our two tertiary care centres in the region. It's... I don't know where we'll find the money. I wish we didn't have to find... You didn't have to find that huge capital, but I understand the reality and also really appreciate the KGH expertise that our residents benefit from. And so, I was surprised you didn't have an asking mind. And if, at the very least, the capital campaign to build the new hospital, perhaps there's something with a fixed term over a long period of time that this council may consider. But as you also know, our municipal elections are next year and if you have an ask, I would be open to hearing it and I don't know about my colleagues at this point, but I would want to consider this in the future going forward. So, thank you for the work. I know you're the foundation side of it, but the other side's critical and I'm open to having that conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Pankow?
Thanks, Abby. It's been a couple of years since you've been here, but I appreciate you being highlighting, again, how many of our citizens are utilizing KHSC, as we used to say, KGH and Hotel Dew. But, and I know my wife, we were there this week, it was two family members, one son on two different days. I've got another family member going through cancer treatment there and I'm hoping to stop in this week to see a friend who's there for cancer treatment. So, we know how vital KGH and Hotel Dew are to our community and like councillor McKenna, I'm, I guess, interested in having the conversation and seeing where things go, recognizing the financial challenges we face, but also understanding the value that it brings to our community. Thank you.
Councillor Quinn?
Thank you. Thank you, Abby. I have to tell you, I used the facility this summer and it was fantastic and it was there and they were ready to see me and Dr Fleming was wonderful. It is something that's huge and I do agree with my colleagues, maybe we need to really sit and look at this because where do you get the funding? Where are the people using it and you're not getting the funding from the province? So, I guess small municipalities need to take a look. Can we build it all for you? No, we can't, but maybe we can be there to help and to me, that is very important. Like I said, I was in Kingston this summer, treated very well. I was very, very pleased. I have a brother that is not really well and he uses Kingston all the time and so I appreciate what you're offering. So, let's keep the doors open.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Abby, and I think as you've heard, one of my comments is going to be everybody in town knows someone that's used Kingston while there's, you know, probably everybody here. So, we really appreciate, especially I remember when, when the dialysis came years and years ago, but that was so huge for, for the people that needed in Smith Falls. So, really appreciate the work you do and it sounds like we'll probably have a discussion in the future about helping out with the exciting project you've got going. So, thank you so much for coming. Okay, moving along. We have our Downtown Business Association here to tell us about the exciting year they've had this year. Christine?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council and Staff. Thank you for having us. On behalf of the DVA, please to share an overview of our 2025 events, promotions and beautification efforts and to offer a glimpse of what's ahead for 2026. Our goal this year was pretty simple, to strengthen our downtown economy and create more reasons for people to visit and celebrate our local businesses all year long. So, to start by our highlights of 2025, we, in January, we began the Buy Back Program, which was shoppers who spent at participating businesses were entered to win back the value of their purchases in downtown dollars, driving strong post-holiday traffic and rewarding local loyalty during a slow retail season. In April, we did a family-friendly event, which is the Golden Egg Hunt, which introduced new customers to local shops. Mother's Day campaign, very similar. We introduced the Downtown Loyalty Program. This was kind of an extensive program. We launched a new initiative to reward shoppers for supporting downtown businesses with ongoing draws and incentives throughout the year through a QR code scan. No purchase necessary, just check in and support local. And then in June, we introduced the first-ever Downtown Bike Night, which took place on the first Wednesday of June, featuring live music. It started with 10 vendors and a crowd of 1,000, which only grew over the next three events, bringing in roughly 4,000 to 5,000 people, 40 vendors and more local live music. This series brought in just under $100,000 in reported revenue for our downtown businesses and has quickly become a signature event. In 2026, we plan to grow the partnership further with tourism to activate more entertainment at the bandstand and we will be aiming for Guinness World Record numbers at our Canada Day event. We will also be seeking town support for signage and local logistics for signage. Our Night Market as well in June drew over 1,000 attendees to enjoy local artisans, food vendors and live entertainment, creating a lively evening shopping atmosphere and boosting evening foot traffic for local restaurants and shops. We had our Downtown Music Series in July. Our free outdoor concerts showcased local musicians and encouraged visitors to dine and shop downtown, together with venues like the Tap House, Rob Roy's, Bowie's and Davidson Courtyard, we positioned Smith Falls as a growing music hub in eastern Ontario. On August, we had our Downtown Summer Social. Despite the heat, this relaxed, free community event brought together families with food, music and entertainment, celebrating the vibrant heart of our community. And as well, we had in September, our largest music event of the year, featuring multiple stages and artists such as The Road Apples, The One-Eyed Dogs, Claude Munson, River City Junction and Greenhouse Revival. It drew more than 1,000 regional visitors, generating significant local business activity and tourism exposure and one heck of a party. October, we brought in, it was a new event for us. It was a month of creativity and celebration, it was the Mystic Market. This unique market blended holistic vendors, tarot readers, handmade artisans, stilt walkers and fire breathers, introducing a new audience demographic to downtown. Many visitors stayed to dine, shop and explore, while local businesses reported increased foot traffic and same-day sales, thanks to themed promotions and window displays. The Downtown Art Walk also happened in October. It was planned for the spring, but the weather was just absolutely incredible this year. The Art Walk transformed downtown into a walking gallery, featuring local artists, live demonstrations and pop-up exhibits inside businesses and outdoor spaces. It successfully bridged commerce and culture, encouraging visitors to linger longer, connect with artists and shop while enjoying the arts. This event not only beautified the downtown core, but also fostered creative partnerships between local businesses and the arts community, building pride and vibrancy. Our Celebration at the end of October, one of our favorite events, brought over 700 families downtown during a traditionally slower retail period. It offered a safe, inclusive and festive environment for children and families, while promoting exploration of local shops. And then coming up, we haven't, we're not there yet, we have our Shop Small Holiday Crawl, encouraging shoppers to visit multiple businesses using our stamp cards with participating locations, offering holiday treats and discounts. The Cookie Crawl, this beloved annual event, has sold over 130 tickets this year, which is double last year's sales, with participants visiting downtown shops to collect locally baked cookies. Some participants are traveling from as far as Collingwood and other BIAs have now reached out to learn how to replicate the success. We have our 12 Days of Christmas giveaways, that's coming up as well, which is a social media campaign. We hit beautification. We did... We installed this year the downtown banners, which went along with the Art Walk. We did a revamp of the Russell Street Parket in partnership with Parks and Recreation. We did more downtown signage, we touched up the alley and the mural, our colorful benches, we installed flowers in the benches, as well as the fall flowers and the winter banners, I believe, go up next week. Beyond that, we've welcomed a record number of new associate members, strengthening our marketing outreach. I mean, it's, it's a testament to they, the businesses have faith in what we're doing and they want to be a part of it. We've recruited businesses such as far as Buckler 2 Plus out at Settlers Ridge. So, it's, it is wonderful. Looking ahead to 2026, after meeting with the Economic Development and Tourism Department, we submitted a partnership funding request of $50,000. Tourism has confirmed a renewed focus on marketing and will not be running events apart from Canada Day. So, the Downtown Business Association is prepared to fill that void by continuing to deliver high-impact, community-driven experiences that bring people into our town. So, building on our success, we will continue to grow our signature events, such as Mystic Market, our Celebration, our Bike Nights, our Music Festival, the Night Market, we're looking to bring it onto Beckwood Street and have up to 100 vendors this year, and the Cookie Crawl doubling our numbers from last year to put that many bodies back into these businesses downtown. We will be retiring the Summer Social and introducing an exciting new Fall Celebration, something like a Haunted Harvest Weekend, we're still working on the name, a full weekend festival combining autumn festivities, live entertainment and family attractions, including a Soapbox Derby, the return of Celebration and Mystic Market, a vendor market, themed photo areas and interactive activities for all ages. If we receive the necessary support from the Economic Development Department, we also hope to introduce a Winter Carnival, complete with synthetic ice for skating and curling, skate rentals, midway attractions for our Night Market and expanded marketing efforts to promote all of our events. The Downtown Business Association remains deeply committed to strengthening our core through collaboration, beautification and event-driven engagement. We extend our sincere thanks to the town of Smith Falls for your ongoing partnership and support. Together, we're building a downtown that is vibrant, resilient and truly the heart of our community. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you. And it's Kristin. I'm sorry. Any questions or comments? I'm sure there's... Mayor Pankow?
Sure. Megan, if you can stand up, like, there are two of you need to take a bow. Like, obviously, this is just probably the most memorable and credible summers and, well, years, I guess, when it comes to the work of all of you. Like, you must be exhausted.
Yeah.
But, but, but it's also fulfilled, I guess, because, you know, you've accomplished so much, everything you set out to do. And you mentioned briefly, just, like, obviously the benefit of the downtown, but the ripple effect across town.
Absolutely.
Right? I mean, especially those Bike Nights, I'm sure that every restaurant across the whole gas station, I mean, it was just a great economic driver every time it filled the downtown. So, just thank you. You've taken on a lot, you've delivered a lot. When it comes to drawing people into our community, you did more this, this, this season probably than multiple years combined, really, right? Especially when you think of the impressions people have when they got here, probably the most attractive downtown we've ever had, the flowers were at the stand, we get incredible feedback all the time and your efforts brought so many people here, created such positive impression and gave them every reason to come back. So, so thank you for all you've done.
You're here. Councillor Miller?
Thank you. And just to echo what the mayor said, I have the privilege of working with these fine folks on their, on their board and it's the hardest-working group in Smith Falls. It just blows me away, I can't keep up. So, thank you so much to both of you and to the committee. And I think what's really encouraging, and councillor Robinson can vouch for this too, this group's working really well with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Small Business Advisory Centre and with all of those partners and I know that the town's stepping up to the table as well and I hope we will continue to grow our partnership as, as they need us, because we can't step back now. This has just been an outstanding year.
Councillor Quinn?
Thank you. I think most husbands said the way I feel, but it's very, very encouraging to see what you have done and you have done so much, so much, you really, really have. We had a couple of ladies in the store on Saturday and they came to Smith Falls because they had heard, they were from Elmont, they had heard some of the things that went on and so they just came over to browse, but they had heard about some of the things that brought them here and they were, they were singing the praises, I think, of how beautiful the town was, how friendly the stores are and how attractive it is to come here and find all the goodies that they were finding. So, thank you for all your hard work. You really have put an awful lot of effort in there and we support you going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin, and I can't wait to see Lou's piano next year.
It's almost there.
It's beautiful.
It just needs to be sealed and tuned.
Great.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything. I understand we do not have any CAO or directors verbal reports. This evening, we have no committee of the whole consent reports. We do have some priority issues tonight. 9.1 is professional engineering services, three-year standing offer agreement with our manager, the water treatment plant, Andrew McCall.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pankow and members of council. Through the chair, the purpose of this report is to seek council's approval to establish a three-year standing arrangement agreements with five qualified engineering firms to support ongoing work within the Utilities Division. These agreements will... These agreements will ensure the town has timely access to professional engineering services for both operational and capital projects, helping us to maintain reliable and compliant water and wastewater systems. Following a request for proposal process, staff are recommending standing arrangements with SEMA, EVB Engineering, RV Anderson Associates, JL Richardson Associates and MAP Global Engineering. This approach has proven to be successful in the past, streamlining procurement, improving response times and maintaining consistency across projects. The agreements will also lock in rates for the next three years, 2026 to 2028, providing costability and predictability within approved budgets. Assignments will be distributed equitably based on project needs and each firm's capacity to meet those timelines. Performance will be continued to moderate through the term and firms can be removed from the list if service levels are not maintained. This recommendation supports the town's strategic plan, particularly our commitment to investing in infrastructure and to keep pace with our community's needs. So staff recommend that council approve the recommendation as presented. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions, council, we have.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions, comments? Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm supportive of the recommendation. I just wondered of the five, do they have offices in Eastern Ontario or?
Oh, yes. Yep, they're all local.
They're all?
Yep, fairly local, yes. Ottawa, they have, most of them do have offices elsewhere to expand their territories across Eastern Ontario, but yes, they are.
They're coming from Toronto, they're down.
No, no.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilor Miller.
Thank you, thank you for your report and I support your recommendation. Just for those watching and for myself as well, can you give me a couple of examples of what you would call on one of these firms?
Yeah, for sure. So I'll first start off by saying the staff that we have at the Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant are all very good at what they do. We know water and wastewater, but our buildings have mechanical, structural and many different processes that might just kind of dip outside of our specialties. Having strong engineering companies to support us in those who are first in our industry have only allowed us to keep costs within budgeted amounts. In order to that, they provide technical details. So some of the firms that are on this list, we're currently working with and we've worked with this year. So MAP Global, we've worked with them on electrical stuff, electrical ESA for our wastewater facility. EVB is currently assisting us with our tower, our new water tower that's going to be coming online here very shortly. RV Anderson was involved with the building of our water treatment facility and they also support us with various, various projects like carbon replacements. And they helped us this year with our gate replacement project down at the wastewater plant. JL Richards supported us in our blow replacement this year and as well SEMA Engineering is currently working us right now on our solids handling. So we do have a bit of a working relationship with the five that are on the list. And one of the things that I'll say is that when it comes to time savings and, and keeping costs down, working with companies that have worked with us in the past and maintaining those relationships, they've done a lot of the foundational work to build that basis with us, to go out and seek new engineers for certain projects. There would be a lot of that beginning the leg work, understanding, learning our system, learning how the Town of Smith Falls works. All five of these companies have worked with us and they do understand what standard we have for the Town of Smith Falls and they're all willing to support us and work with that.
Thank you very much.
Great explanation. Any other comments? Do we have, we have thumbs up? I, I take it that, thank you, Andrew. Does need not go to council or disauthorizing to go ahead and sign? Does it need to have motion for council?
We'll probably, we'll bring a motion forward depending on the, the amount of business that comes from tonight. It might be in two weeks, we may not have a meeting next week.
Okay.
I've consulted with Andrew and that's, that will work with his timeline.
Sounds good. Thanks, Andrew.
Yeah, through the chair, I thank you guys. Good evening.
Okay, 9.2, debt projections with Treasurer Dowber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report tonight is building on our momentum to look at longer-term budgets and be able to project out where, what the needs are for the town and what our funding sources will be and the affordability. We thought it would be wise to bring this report separate from our budget meetings ahead of time so that budget meetings don't become too overwhelming and gives council a little bit of time to digest it. So if you want to just move on to the, to the slideshow, please. Tonight, we're going to be talking about what our future projections are, what our current debt is and what our future projections are in order to provide council from context so that when we come up to our long-term budgeting, our capital budgeting, we have a bit of an idea of where we're going to head within that.
Was it attached to your?
It's attached to the report, yeah. There we go. So I wanted to start off with a little bit of explanation of why municipalities use debt. I understand the council knows this, but in order to provide the information to the public, I'm, I'm going to touch on it very briefly and at a very high level. So municipalities take on debt for a number of different reasons and a number of different concepts. One is the concept of matching costs to the useful life of, of that particular asset. Sorry, next slide. As well as trying to avoid sudden tax increases as capital projects pick up and reserves become depleted. Next slide, please. Some considerate vehicle or a, a service that charges the users of an asset the cost. So for example, you know, a bridge is good for 50 years. Are we going to charge the current residents for restructuring of that bridge when it's going to be used by 50 years? So you've got a couple of generations using it. Same for 25 years of roads or 75 years of, of piping within the ground. Debt can be a vehicle to allow to spread the cost over for the people that are actually using those assets over its lifetime. Next slide, please. Managing cash flows, ensuring that reserves aren't depleted. Next slide. And being able to take advantage of low interest rates. So those times, and I'm going to talk a little bit about our setup with Infrastructure Ontario as opposed to banks, but sometimes when the interest rates are really low, Infrastructure Ontario is municipal, or sorry, it's a provincially run organization or backed organization that funds projects for municipalities and allows you to lock in for 15, 25, 30 years at an interest rate. So when those interest rates are really low, we can lock in at an interest rate that's lower than what the cost of the capital CPI or the construction CPI might be, thereby actually saving money by debenturing it as opposed to saving up the money to pay for term reserves. Next slide, please. Leveraging when municipal portions of grants agreements aren't available. So if grants become available, we're able to apply, it becomes pressure to do the municipal portion of it. Some municipalities then use debt to pay for the municipal portion of that grant. Next slide, please. And it's an option for financing when planning out capital replacement upgrades over a longer-term period. So as we start to look at 10-year projections for our capital replacement and renovation, then debt becomes one of the funding sources that we talk about. Next slide, please. So now we're just going to get into the, kind of the meat and the potatoes of where we're at and what we're looking at. And remember, this is very, it's very high level. Smith Falls currently pays over, just over $1.5 million per year to service our existing debt. So we are, we are budgeting for both the principal and the interest portions of that in order to pay back. Currently, we have, we have debt structures with RBC and Infrastructure Ontario both. And 1.5 million is what we budget to, to repay that. Next slide. Now, we also want to, for upcoming talks, talk about, our upcoming budget talks, talk about what we're projecting out for additional debt that we're looking to take on. The first six capital projects on that list are budgets that were to be funded from debt from previous year's budgets. Currently, they're sitting on the balance sheet on something called unfunded capital, which is common for municipalities to do, but they can only leave it on that balance sheet for a certain amount of time in order to get all the information needed, the financial reporting to be able to take that debenture on. So some of these projects were carried forwards from previous years as we slipped through so many changes within the senior financial position. 2024 saw an analysis and making sure that we had a good handle on what was still outstanding so that we can clear that up and get rid of that unfunded capital. Additionally, in 2026 is to venture for the new water tower project. And then in 27, based on the amounts from the September 2nd report, that was an update on the Public Works Garage Fire, the value that was entered into that report would be about $9 million. So we've used that as a potential going forward to, to issue debt. Also, based on the financial budget proposal for the trunk main to accompany the, the new water tower, we're looking at just under $13 million to add to debt in 2028. Next slide, please. So these estimates, and, and, and please keep this in mind, both to, to the public and council, that these are based on today's current Infrastructure Ontario rates, which changed with the October 23rd announcement of the 25 basis point decrease. That with those additions in '26, '27 and '28, if we were to move forward with them, we'd be looking at a tax levy increase. So this isn't a, an increase for the debt that we're paying back. This is an overall tax levy increase in '26 of 2.2%, in 2027 of 2.7% and then in 2028 of 3.8%. So if we were to take this debt on, that would be the starting, that's where we'd be starting discussions for the, for the levy increases for those years. And again, there's, there's some time between now and then for a lot of things to change. Funding applications to come up with, with the trunk main, that is the town accepting full cost without grants. So we still have time to get a grant, we are still searching for a grant and we are hopeful that the interest rate increase will come down between, between now and as those projects come up. But as the situation is today, this is, this is what we're potentially looking at for future budgets. Next slide, please. So this is an update of a chart that was presented back in April and then again by the treasurer before me as to what our debt ceiling looks like. The orange line is the provincial level, the green line is our self-employed level and then the blue line would represent the debt that would be needed. So what we're looking at is in, is around 2028 of possibly having to adjust that self-imposed debt ceiling in order to, to finance those particular projects. There's, oh, sorry, next slide. And then this is in chart form. The middle chart shows our self-imposed ceiling and then you can see our debt, the third line is debt capacity with today's rate. This is how much debt would be available to take out, given our self-imposed debt ceiling. And as you can see, we run out towards the end of 2027. And then keep in mind the provincial level, which is the limit that the town is allowed to go to. It does dip down quite a bit in 2028, only allowing us borrowing capacity of 27 million. And then it starts to go back up slightly after that if there's no more debt taken. Next slide, please. So I'd be happy to take any questions that may come up.
Thank you. Paul, Mayor Panco?
Thanks, Paul. I think it's great to get this update and to give us some time to contemplate the challenges we face as we go forward. But I think it's also, I think important to look back because it's just, it, it does seem like a significant increase in our debt load, but we also have to recognize that we would have had to increase taxes more in the past if we wanted to build enough reserves to pay for these big-ticket items in cash when the time came. It probably wasn't even realistic. I think we've done a good job of, of managing or minimizing debt and not taking on new debt in, in the last 10 years or so. And I recall like 10 years ago, I think we were paying about 2.2 million a year in debt servicing. So we retired a lot of debt and, and gained some capacity. And the time when we were paying 2.2 million a year, our tax revenue was about 12 million a year. So our tax revenue is probably up 75, 80% from then. But we haven't added the new debt until what we're facing right now. So I think from, from a financial constraint standpoint, taking on this debt now with much more tax revenue, one, it's, it's the right thing we need to do, but it won't have the same burden because we were fortunate to have had the growth and, and not have taken on debt for anything else really in the past. But it's also, as I mentioned, basically the assumption that there will be, we should have some degree of federal provincial support for some of these projects, I would hope going forward, that should make a difference. We also don't have the new youth arena recreational complex on here, which I know is a much bigger number, which will add to this much more. But from a question standpoint, I assume when you, when you've got on slide, page 41, I guess it is overall, but it shows a 2.2 increase in '26, 2.7 in '27. That's not, so that's each, that's the increase at individual year. So collectively, it's over 8% of an increase over a three-year period to accommodate the debt. Also about 3% a year, let's say on average, knowing that there's other, a lot of other expenses we have to bear as well. So it's going to be challenging, but I think at least we're in a position that it won't be crippling. And, and we know to take on projects like this without sufficient upper-tier support, which I think doesn't seem to be as, as common today as what it was many years ago. And we're going to carry a bigger burden, but at least I think we're in a position where we can. Thank you.
Thanks. And I, I would agree with you on that. And when you look at, say, the water treatment plant or the new arena, we only paid a third of those costs for each of those projects and that's worth taking the debt on. And that's why I agree, the trunk line is right in line with that type of essential service that we need to provide and it's a huge ticket item. So yeah, with any luck, we get some help on that and other things as well. And, but you know, I, I agree. I think that we're not in a terrible spot, given the growth that we've experienced over the last number of years. And when you talk about, the mayor talks about, well, we're carrying 2 million bucks a year on debt and now it's, you know, it's much lower. And I don't see any dark clouds in terms of our growth. I think that we're sort of growing in vital community. So this is something that is good to know before we start talking about the budget. And I really appreciate, I'll be coming back to this during the budget as well. So thanks for that. Any other comments or questions? Oh, sorry.
So I, I would, through, through the chair, I would just add on to that, that there are a number of items that, that can change between now and 2028, as, as the mayor even mentioned, looking for federal funding and some partnerships. But even between now and the actual 2026 budget procedures, I've, I've stated a couple times that I've used Infrastructure Ontario. The reason that we use them is when the interest rates are low, it's really great to, to kind of lock into those low rates. But in the meantime, we do have some other options and I'm waiting for some information to come back. One, one of the partners that we currently deal with is, is RBC. And one of the discussions that we've had is right now, rates with Infrastructure Ontario are about 4.6%, which is not ideal. And RBC offers a program where they can provide funding, almost like a home mortgage where you're amortizing it over 30 years, but you're just paying for it for a few years. And then if the interest rates come down, it allows us to be able to jump out of that and then jump and lock in once the interest rates become lower with Infrastructure Ontario. So as we, as we come back and talk about capital, I will bring what those rates are and the proposal and the difference between the two.
Sounds good.
Some good decisions.
I got Councilor McKenna and then Councilor McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I too like this proper lead-up to our budget discussion. This is really helpful, not just for us, but for the public. So I'm really grateful for this kind of information. I just wanted- I just wanted to go over your, there's one slide where, and I think I understood you, but I want to clarify, the debt we took on for Town Hall, Back the Street, Lumber Lab, this is work we've already done. So what we're just doing is we took a temporary loan, are paying that off, and then we're going to lock, for lack of a better word, lock it in and figure out where it's going to go, and we're going to do that in 2026. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Through the chair, yeah. For the most part, yes. It's been carried on our balance sheet. And what that means is, it's basically an internal interest-free loan that we pay for ourselves because our reserve balances are much greater. Therefore, we still come out in a positive note with a reserve. So it's a negative, in essence, it's a slight negative balance until we can actually fund it and get the cash back in there to replenish those reserves. And the idea is to replenish those reserves in 2026. One of the requirements is that we have our financial statement so done and uploaded our financial information return, which is done, and that'll give us enough time to complete those diventures.
And it's fortuitous that the rates are coming down while we're going to lock those in next year.
Yeah, and that's where we need to discuss, and that's kind of why I wanted to really talk about that longer-term amortization with a shorter-term repayment period, so that we left ourselves the ability to, you know, if the rates are higher, that we can lock in currently with something that's not as low as we would like, so that we have the opportunity when the rates do come down to jump. The danger in that is that the rates go up, and that's always something to consider. So there is a little bit of a danger in it, but as you're right, it provides us the opportunity to lock in.
My final comment, Mr. Chair, is, so with just our committed debt that we have going forward, we have to adjust our self-imposed deadline within a couple of years, and that's before we even consider any other debt. So as I think my colleagues have said, it's going to be challenging, but doable, we hope.
Yes, through the chair, yes. And that, and again, that's based on the current information without grant funding for that large water project.
Thank you.
Councillor McGuire?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Paul. It's really helpful to see it from a big picture. I was just wondering, is there an opportunity in the future if we could get the, for the current debt, I really like the table that's got the annual amounts for each one broken out, and if we could get the total amount and the number of years left remaining on it, that for me would help really understand the whole picture of it.
Through the chair, yes. I can absolutely provide that. I actually have it, but I didn't want to provide it to be locked in in people's mind when we're still considering what the rates might be with RBC. Once that information comes in and we talk about capital, I'll bring forward something out, but that would show the difference between the two.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, this is good information, and we received it gratefully and look forward to talking about it further. You're still up there with kind of connected the Roma Conference delegation requests.
And it, through the chair, it certainly is an important piece, especially that second suggestion in there for delegation. You know, cat's out of the bag before we hit the budget meeting that our OCIF funding is down by over $90,000. So the purpose of this report is to talk about topics for the upcoming Roma Convention in January that's hosted in Toronto, and to be able to put forth some requests for delegation. Staff have come up with three, connecting links fund application, the decrease in OCIF funding stream, and the development charges for long-term care homes. The first one is very Smith Falls specific in how that affects us. The other two really affect a lot of other municipalities too. So staff have, you know, pointed that out to say that there might be an ability to strengthen the message if we were to present it in concert with other municipalities. So the report is to bring forth these three topics for requests for delegation and get some feedback from council.
Thank you. Councillor Miller?
Yeah, thank you very much. I support the three recommendations, and having been to Roma a few times, I think there's power in numbers. So it makes a lot of sense to me when we're going in with some of our neighboring municipalities on those other two issues, so smart choices.
Thanks. Councillor McGuire?
Thanks, yeah, I support the first two options. I think with the OCIF funding stream, it's really disappointing that when we do the right things and we are fiscally responsible, we keep getting punished for it by the province. So I think they need to hear that. Development charges for long-term care homes, if that was one where there's a broader group, definitely would have more power. But I think the one that's not on here that I bring up a lot is that the impact values still haven't been updated. And I was playing around in the impact portal the other day, and you can click on properties and see what they're assessed at, and it's got no basis on what properties would sell for. And I think it's, we get a lot of complaints around tax time, that we've got such a high tax rate, but we've got such a low assessment rate, it's still an average. But the problem with the average is there's a significant number of properties in town probably overpaying, and there's properties that are underpaying. So if that impact rates were up to date with what the properties are actually worth, I think when it comes to setting the tax rate, it'd be a lot more fair for the community, and I think it'd be a better way to raise money because it's, what the average rate is still $180, around $180,000, and it'd be a pretty great deal to get a house for $180,000 in Smith Falls this year.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't disagree with you. I'm just wondering if the Association for Ontario Municipalities have this on their radar in terms of lobbying the province, so I'd like to find that out. But I agree with what you're saying on that, and I agree with the suggestions for delegations. And with the OCIF, I mean, I think repetition, and it seems like every year this is a topic, and so they've got to hear it time after time after time. So you could do, I don't know if there's an opportunity to do both in there yourselves and then be part of the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Conference or whatever. So Mayor Packell?
Yeah, we'll be hosting the UOMC meeting, next meeting here later in November. We haven't had the dates yet. And we can add that to our discussion. I'll see what our peers are, with same concerns. But I think we have delegated on that in the past unsuccessfully, and no others have too, and it's a real point of frustration. I don't know if it would, even if we missfellowed Ontario stood up and said, we need this fixed, I'm not sure that it would be fixed the next day either anyway, but yeah, the UOMC would be a place for that to be discussed.
That's good. Sounds good. Councillor McKenna?
Yeah, I would like to have the impact discussion, that if it comes from the regional mayors, I'd be all for it. For number two on the OSAF funding, it's complicated. There is a formula. We may not like the formula, but we've been doing well as a municipality, and as a result of that, our rates go down. And other municipalities who are struggling, their rates have gone up, their allocation's gone up. So I'm sure we weren't complaining about the funding stream when ours was going up a few years ago. So that one, unless it's the regional mayors, I'm not interested in bringing it forward as an individual municipality. You may not like the formula, but it is set up that way that rural and remote communities are struggling. Some of them in our neighborhood are doing, are going to get an increase, and some of us are going to go down. I just wouldn't rely on it. It is a significant amount of money, but it isn't, I don't want to go to the bank on OSAF funding each year. I wouldn't depend on it at all, and as long as we're doing well, we'll have to make our own way on that one. So I would like to add impact, OSAF if the mayors agree, but not as an individual municipality. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Packell?
Yes, OSAF will allow that to the agenda for the mayor's discussion, and I think it's not just a matter of the formula, but I think it's also the envelope hasn't changed. So it's quarter million consistently for how many years now? And of course, the cost of infrastructure, inflation in infrastructure has been higher than the average inflation, and this has not been adjusted to reflect that. So that's something we can advocate for with the UOMC.
Sounds good. Okay, anything else? No? Thank you. Well done. Community Improvement Plan amendments with Carl Grecky, Director Grecky. And Carl's going to do this report, and there's several items in it in terms of changes that are going to be made or proposed for this. So we'll, once he goes through one change, we'll maybe pause and then get some questions or comments as we go along. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll open with just a bit of a preamble and a summary of what's brought us to date, and then we'll be following more or less the steps or the sections that are outlined in the report. So we're here, and we're pleased to bring forward the results of the review that we've undertaken of the Community Improvement Plan. So the Towns Community Improvement Plan's been in effect now for a couple of years and includes 15 programs that provide a variety of supports and incentives for private development that fits within one or more of the strategic focus areas that have been identified by council. So as council has seen, the facade programs, the downtown interior renovation programs and accessibility programs have seen the most use. The housing in Brownfield ones have seen very little use, but those ones are quite exact, so application volumes are probably never going to be high. But when the opportunity does arise to have, to offer the right support, then we certainly would be happy to have that tool in our toolbox. So the Brownfield redevelopment, we're not proposing to change it, but we're proposing to keep it as is as an example. If we should have the opportunity to use it, we'll be glad we have it. So after a couple of years of working with the CAP, council's instructed us to have a broader look at the plan and the process in order to ensure that it aligns with your expectations for identifying and funding good and high-value projects that represent a sound investment in municipal funds. So the review was catalyzed by a couple of files that highlighted some different interpretations of what was a good CAP application, as well as some changes to legislation that tweaked the applicability of at least one of the housing-related programs. The report before you this evening is a product of quite a comprehensive consultation process, including delegations and meetings with committees, stakeholders, and others who've had a role within the Community Improvement Plan. We've also consulted with Dylan Consulting, the authors of the 2022 report review, the changes with them as well. So what we've heard is the CAP is a very useful tool, which conveniently support great outcomes, but there's an opportunity to focus it to help best achieve the purpose set out in the document. More specifically, we've heard that we should remove ambiguity in policy and within the evaluation form and downtown core design guidelines, all so that everyone's on the same page in terms of what's a good project. We heard the construction repair costs have gone way up in the last couple of years and that the amounts on offer no longer make a big difference for big projects. So the report will detail the proposed changes, and the first one, just I'll speak briefly on the proposed accessibility programs. They are proposed to be modified to increase the funding threshold available. And also, while the accessibility programs support making improvements at the front entrance to provide the person accessing the space the same opportunity, the same access that everyone else has, we're proposing to fund rear accesses in cases where there is no other option. And there might be no other option depending on a couple of different factors, such as its location, certain design criteria, and so on. So that would be, so I'll pause there and look for any comments on the accessibility.
Any comments on the accessibility? Okay. Yeah, thumbs up on that? Yep. Okay, go ahead, Carl.
Several changes are also proposed to the housing CAP programs. Staff are proposing that we remove Program 3, that's the development charge rebate, since it is now redundant, given that the province has now exempted affordable housing units from development charges. That's a DC change that's happened after the CAP was approved. We're also proposing changes to Program 5, the tax abatement, to increase the rebate of the tax assessment increase from 50% to 80% for nonprofit developers. An additional 20% rebate would also apply if the units were to be made universally accessible, and that would be for both nonprofit and market developers. This would replace the capital awards grant that can currently stack on the rebate, and it's a better fit since the capital rebate program is really intended for improvements to existing buildings rather than new ones. This carries forward a recommendation from the Smith Falls For All Committee to increase the incentive for attainable and accessible housing. The challenge, as always, is trying to find that sweet spot where you might find the right incentive figure to enable attainable housing while making a project viable for a developer. Importantly, we also propose to amend the definition of affordable to align with provincial rate, which would simplify applications and potentially enable other stacking. So the housing-related policies were included in the body of the staff report, however, unfortunately, were left out of Appendix A, which is on the detailed summary of the changes. So I wanted to bring that to council's attention and would respectfully request that if council directs us to proceed as stated in the report, that also includes proceeding on the housing programs if that's council's wish. So just to clarify on the impact of that change, we, or the proposed change, our own CAP calculator is based on a variety of inputs that we put in there regarding market rent, CPI, and a number of other factors. The rate in Smith Falls, the attainable rate in Smith Falls for bachelor unit would be $1,055, whereas for the MMAH rate for Smith Falls, the affordable monthly rent would be a bit higher at $1,206. However, as the units get bigger, that changes. So our current attainable rate for one bedroom is about $1,400, and according to provincial rules, it would be just under $1,300. And that for two and three bedrooms, our rental rates are a couple hundred dollars higher than what the provinces would be. So if that's, so if we were to align with the provincial rates, that would be, that would be the impact of that. So I'll pause there as it relates to, as it relates to the housing-related programs.
Councillor McGuire had a question?
Thanks, Carl. For this one, we don't, I want to make sure I'm understanding it right, but we don't charge DCs on affordable, attainable housing. So for the 20% increases, I want to get a better understanding of what the rationale is, is there other communities in the county that have the 100%? I think that, or what is it about that 20% that's limiting the developments? Because I think that Smith Falls, as much as this is still a challenge for our community, it's frustrating when a new development goes up, and it's not necessarily people that were living in Smith Falls before that get first access to those spaces. So if we're going to be highly subsidizing something that people from other communities are able to take advantage of, it's not helping Smith Falls the way, like get forward on it. So I just, I don't know, I'm trying to understand the rationale or what, where the background of it's from.
Okay, thanks for that. Mayor Packell?
Yes, what I can say, as chairless committee and involved in discussion here, so first, I'm going to go back to the Carebridge development. And so we did commit to the tax abatement on that property, and that was, and we gave it support and principle to development. And it was a major goal in the development of the pro forma to determine affordability factors, the ability to move ahead with construction. So it's very meaningful for nonprofits if we're able to do it. To your point, if it's a, it's a partnership with the county, and the county is providing the units at Redgear to income levels, so they're subsidized in each unit, then the people moving in there will come off the county waitlist. And if they're not from Smith Falls already, they'll be our citizens after that. But if pure not-for-profit, so if Carebridge goes ahead and does a development on Robinson, we've had discussions in the last couple of months about the plan there. It's really a matter of looking for federal provincial programs that can help enable that to happen. And it's not a partnership with the county, they determine who moves in there. And obviously, we would have the ability at that point to have some authority over priority to our citizens if we write a tax abatement that's going to reduce the taxes on there for the next decade. The additional 20% for universally accessible is primarily focused on the reality of the elected builder community who are living in homes that don't work for them, are on second and third floors, and people who have very limited mobility, people who have doorways that don't work, bathrooms that don't work, kitchens that don't work, et cetera. And there's value in having that additional 20%, which could encourage a developer to build more units which would actually be universally accessible, not just what the building code dictates, because even when the building code dictates 15%, I think, if it's six units or more in a development, that's a number, but the actual universal accessibility doesn't impact all elements of the apartment. So someone in a wheelchair might be able to get in the door and get around, because the hallway's wider, but the bathroom may not work, and the kitchen counters may not be a level suitable for them. So it's hopeful that extra incentive would encourage some developers profit, not-for-profit or profitable, to actually build units for people who need units without universal accessibility.
Yeah, go ahead.
And how, if you've got a building and say thirty percent of the units are accessible, but there's one assessment on it, is something that gets calculated through the application process or functionally, how does it?
So, and actually I might defer to the planning clerk who does some research on this, but my, my understanding is what's, what's being proposed here is that in order to get that extra twenty percent, all of the units would need to be, would need to be accessible, meeting the standard that's, that we would define in the CIP.
Okay, just, and just to clarify, like the purpose of tonight is to go ahead with a public meeting and then it's gonna come back again, but it's a really good discussion for us to have at this point. And then that, that can go into, you know, staff's input for staff, so it's good that we're doing it, but we're not deciding on the changes of the CIP tonight, just to be clear. Okay, Carl.
So the proposed changes to the CIP also broaden the heritage related supports that we have in order to acknowledge that in many cases heritage sympathetic and appropriate material is more expensive than the easiest fix. There is a broader public interest, both economically and socially, to maintain and restore heritage properties. Financial incentives are a best practice to support good design decisions on designated, on designated properties. So firstly, we propose to create a new residential heritage grant that proposes to offer up to $10,000 on residential properties that are designated. And this would apply anywhere in the town, not just in the, not just in the downtown core. I'll pause there and look for any discussion and feedback on that.
I support that. Everybody else? Okay.
Thank you. Secondly, we propose to expand the commercial facade programs, if we've heard that the funds on offer do not go very far. For example, if replacing a crumbling facade with, with stock go costs a hypothetical $25,000 and wood or masonry costs over twice that, if that same $10,000 was an offer, then it's less likely we'd see the sort of high value, high impact proposals that we would want. The current facade programs propose to be increased to a double that available funding with an increased top up for properties that are designated, individually designated heritage or within a, within a heritage district. The new incentive is proposed to help implement and align with the heritage conservation district plan that council will be looking at in a few weeks and also a, a proposed top up for the replacement of, or the repair of heritage windows rather than supporting their replacement.
Thank you, Council McGuire.
Thanks. Yeah, I think this is needed and it was definitely with the meetings with the DBA and different consultations, it was, it was brought up. For me personally, I'd really like to see some kind of a tax abatement option for a major facade improvement that's gonna have to involve repointing, window replacement. You can think of the, some of the buildings in our downtown core that need that Rita Hotel or post office style refit. Even these numbers aren't going to get them to where they were and we had issues with the Rita Hotel and trying to come up with a complete agreement because the inside was covered by the tax abatement, but the outside didn't qualify. And if that could have been talked about as one package, it would have made the negotiation, I think, a lot smoother and a lot easier, application wise and just, just understanding it wise. The other side of it is, I think it's great that the numbers increased, but I think instead of paying a higher percentage of a heritage renovation, I'd like to see the same percentage, but a higher upset limit. So it's the same effective amount that can be paid out, but it could be paid out over a bigger project. And then that, I think, would get us to see more bang for the buck and, and reduce those situations where somebody says, maybe they come for funding for signage and lighting, but then they put in windows that don't really suit the space because the, the number wasn't gonna qualify for the total grant amount. It gives us more leverage when we're negotiating those renovations and less chance, I think, of something getting done after the fact without the CIP program and maybe not done the way the design guidelines say.
Hey, thank you for that. Council McKenna.
Just a question, it might be in here already. I love the idea of enhancing the available funds to get a better quality exterior finish. So that's the carrot. The other side of that would be that we simply wouldn't support things in the past. Is that the idea, like Steco would no longer be eligible? We just, it's not that we're just adding more funds for a better quality finish or more consistent finish, but we're also removing the option of funding anything that's substandard. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think that's, that's correct. As, as we amend the policy, we would also be looking at some stronger language in, in the design guidelines that remove a little bit of, a little bit of that ambiguity that currently, that currently exists. Council always has the option to not approve a, a funding application that you don't feel brings value to, to a property and council would continue to have that, have that discretion. Our, our hope is this would make it easier for somebody to make a, I guess, a better design decision, if I can put it that way, in terms of what they're, in terms of what they're, they're bringing forward. But I think the idea is that we would be avoiding the, some of those situations where somebody felt that they, they can make a staff at something that's a little bit lower quality because there really isn't much financial incentive to go higher end.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up, I also wanted to just follow up on Council McGuire's suggestion. I think that's, for those exceptional buildings, I think that's worthy to come back after the public consultation or, so I'm not looking to you or Marie to think about what that, these are maybe exceptional full scale renovations that this program wasn't designed for and just think about for those exceptional cases, what other options could be available. I'd be interested in talking more about that when it comes back.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, Carl.
Okay. So a new sign specific facade program is also presented, which takes a different approach than the majority of our CIP programs and that are, which are geared towards property improvements that would benefit the property in the long term. So for those, it's entirely logical that a property be up to date on its taxes or other municipal accounts before receiving tax funding. The proposed sign program responds to what we've heard from the DBA and others, that signs are the ones, are the one complying improvement that adds value to the business more than the property and the tenants have been unable to apply for funds due to arrears on the property through no fault of their own, given that signs can come and go. We did think carefully about that one, recognizing that signs under twenty-five square feet are not accessible improvements under impact. However, it's also said that a sign still does increase the attractiveness of a building, which may increase the ability for a landlord to rent out other units or increase the rent and potentially benefit the property owner nonetheless. We're nonetheless highlighting this option for, for council's consideration and direction, as it does propose a different eligibility criteria for a small and, and very specific item.
Council McGuire.
Yeah, this is a big one for the DBA. They brought up a lot. I think it makes a lot of sense because a lot of the times if that business owner moves locations, they take the sign with them that can come down and be reused. So it's really good. The one thing that it made me think about though, because they were asking if could we put money up beforehand? And I agree with, with your recommendation that we don't do that, but I think that we should also clean up the wording of the, I think it's the interior grant allows for a third of payment upfront. And I think we should get rid of that because we don't know, for the same reasons that we're not offering it for the sign program, we don't offer it for the tax abatement program. Tax abatement's as big as it can get, the sign's about as small as it can get. So if it doesn't work for those two programs on either end, I don't know why we should keep it in that middle program. I don't know if that was the right time to bring that up, but.
It's as good a time as any. I'll certainly welcome council's direction as it relates to that, that one-third advance for interior, interior improvements.
I was saying, thank you, I was saying the same thing, really, or going to say the same thing as Councilor McGuire and just give a hats off to the DBA who spent hours and hours going through these proposals, put forward a full spreadsheet of solutions and thank you for incorporating so many of these today. So where you see that the DBA has made comments or you see that smaller commercial tenants want to be recognized, I think it's really a reflection of the people that are running our businesses in downtown Smith Falls. So just really grateful that they took the time to have their voice heard.
Thank you for that. Council McKenna.
Just, Mr. Chair, it, Council McGuire asked, should that one-third still be part of the interior? Do you, is a rationale, is why, just nobody asked for it to change, so we just left it that way? Is that?
I think that's a, that's a fair statement and also I think typically those are, the interior renovations are usually a larger, a larger ticket item and that gives, with that larger ticket item, it gives somebody a bit of a, bit of a starting ground, but I think that's a fair, it's a fair question if, if we're, if we're not supporting advancing funds for facade improvement, should we be starting with advancing funds for interior programs? So certainly there's, well, very much welcome council's direction on, on that tweak. We can certainly further amend the proposed CIP to accommodate that, if that's what council's wishes.
I'm neutral on it, so I'll wait to see if the public has any feedback when it goes out. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree with that too. Just because there's, there's another step or two coming after tonight, so. Okay.
So the draft amendments, the CIP also propose a variety of administrative amendments that are intended as a whole to provide increased clarity on application submission requirements and find the proper balance between submission and design requirements that are not overly onerous, which we've heard, while still allowing council and the evaluation team enough information to meaningfully review. Finally, the evaluation working group is proposed to include subject matter stakeholders, namely DBA staff and a member of the municipal heritage committee, who would be at the table evaluating the facade programs, the heritage program and, and the interior renovation programs. We'll look for, we'll look for council's direction on, on that proposed tweak.
Okay. Robinson.
I like that idea. I've got to stay on.
Council McGuire.
For the working committee, is this a good time for that? Yeah, my preference would be keep it smaller. I think I've been, I was on the first committee in 2015 and it was way too big. I think, I think if we've got somebody from the planning department, somebody from the heritage committee and somebody from the DBA, that covers most bases. If there's a unique project, like an affordable housing, attainable housing project, that's gonna be a bigger discussion, but I'd say for eighty, ninety percent of those applications, those are the three areas of expertise that could screen out a lot of the issues that can make it further down the line. In the past, it's, it's hard with, with a representative from economic development, their job is to really be working for the businesses and try to get as most for the businesses as they can, where I see the CIP is, is not always, it was hard for them to play that role and also, you know, be objective in reviewing applications and, and it just, I think it creates an awkward position and I just, I don't know, community services, finance, building official, building official stuff is gonna be addressed if there needs to be permitting. And the other department, it's just, it's not, like, yeah, it hasn't, sometimes less is more, I guess, I'll say. So for pre-screening and that, I would recommend a three person committee.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts? Council Miller.
Thank you. Having been that economic development person at that table, I felt that it was a good opportunity for us to talk about the impact the CIP had on the small businesses downtown. And I just think, you know, if you're gonna have the DBA there, then that extra voice, if and when we, you know, reformat that department is probably not a bad idea.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with your suggestion in the report, so it's my two cents. And that's the other, other comment, so.
Just look for council's direction. Are we, does council look to reduce the size of the evaluation group to three or leave it at five as, as in the report? I think that my best suggestion is of course have an even numbers, or an odd number to avoid, avoid a tie.
Council McKenna.
I don't think five is too big.
Five, 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 so five.
So council will see that many of the proposed changes to the CIP increase the amount of funds that are available for a project. And the purpose of that, of course, is to meaningfully support impactful development. Council will decide how much money they set aside in the reserve each year, as they already do. However, if that number is pretty similar to what's been set aside in the last few years, it's likely that fewer, but potentially more impactful projects will be supported. That will raise the question for council as to what you want to prioritize. So the report recognizes that accessible housing and housing as a whole are the first two priorities identified in the CIP, at least as it relates to funding from, for the municipal reserve. So in the event that we are blessed with a lot of good applications under a variety of programs that come up to way more than, than what we have in the reserve, I'd be interested in any feedback that council might have as to how we want to, how we want to prioritize or who gets what program, what area gets first, first dibs at, at funding.
Okay, thank you. Not too many comments there. I guess I would say what, you know, what projects are gonna be more, most impactful? So, you know, and what aligns with the strategic, strategic plan we have. Council McGuire.
I agree, and I think if it's, if we're in a situation where it's oversubscribed and the committee's screened out, they're all high quality applications, then bring it to council and then that's, that's what we're here for, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, which would be potentially a good problem to have. Council.
Just, I wanted to thank staff. This is a really good report. I know we tweaked, it's a, it's a, I think it's an improvement. I look forward to the public feedback and getting it better, but it's, it really, there's a lot of work went into this.
Yeah.
And the details are important and I really appreciate all the work that you guys did on this. It makes my job a lot easier.
So, yeah. Council McGuire.
Yeah, I agree with Councilor McKenna and just if we're, I really like how we did the discussion tonight, section by section, but if we could get the table divided up into those sections for the next report, then it'll be easier to, just to jump through it in the meeting.
So that's good. And so as per the report, we're directing you to proceed with the recommendations to the CIP plan and go to a public meeting as required under section 28. So the next step would be a public meeting and then the[1649.28] So the next step would be a public meeting and then the results of that would come back here, or would you bring back an amended CIP after the public meeting?
So I think at this time, Mr. Chair, we have a number of proposed amendments to the CIP that are on the table and with council's concurrence, we'd schedule a public meeting so we can float those two to the public, get any additional feedback, then our expectation is we would be bringing sort of a final report and potentially a final CIP to council for approval, subject to the Planning Act requirements. So at this time, we're just looking at, I guess, our eyes on the calendar as it relates to the 2026 budget and the spring intake as well as aligning with the heritage conservation district.
Okay. So, Council McKenna?
Just when we promote that public meeting and if you can get it done before Christmas, that's amazing, but I don't know. Can you make it a little more fun and intricate? Like this is, how do we get people, because this is really important. How do you, is it your, is that our media team that would maybe turn this into something a little more exciting?
Well, this is a little different than a, one thing I, through you, Mr. Chair, one thing I love about the community improvement plan is it's different from a lot of, a lot of the planning we deal with is about regulation and land use control and all of that and the CIP has a very different focus. It's about investing in things that improve the community. So we'll, guided by the provisions of the Planning Act and making sure we follow each of those steps, we'll certainly see what we can do about avoiding the sort of dry public meetings that we know and love.
We're not, we're not implying in any way that planning is not fun. I've been told that at home many times, so. And I think it is fun. Okay, you have your direction. We don't need a motion or anything at council, so go ahead with the public meeting unless you've got something else.
Yeah, I just want to publicly acknowledge the hard work of our planning clerk and on the large, on this report and the large amount of work that went into it. As the frontline administrator of the CIP, Marie has used her extensive firsthand experience in really helping to inform and flavor some of these recommendations as best comes from somebody who's worked with it, worked with on a day-to-day basis. And also, as Councilor Miller did, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the accessibility advisory committee chair, municipal heritage committee, Smith Falls for All Committee, the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Association for the time that each of those groups have taken to meet with us and share the ideas. So that was, a lot of volunteer time has provided feedback and some very thoughtful discussion and that's certainly our, we did the best we could to reflect their feedback in this report.
Thank you. Thanks, Carl. Thank you, Marie. Director Dalberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this report, it builds on the July 14th report, report number 2025072, which talked about council remuneration and gave feedback on the results of that survey, which is shown just under the background section in the report, with the mayor council salary, full and half day per diem being slightly under the results and mileage rates being just a touch above. And staff took direction from council to kind of go back and look at comparators that would lead to a better comparison of the workloads. And I believe the suggestion at the time and what we come up with was to look at small urban and also small, single-tier municipalities and compare with those two areas. So based, based on those results, what you see before you is a report that shows those comparisons with a visual representation of where Smith Falls falls within the comparables. And then at the very end of the report, it surmises under the conclusion that this survey also shows that mayor and council salaries are under those comparators as well. The one thing that did change was the half and full day per diem with the small urban and the small, single-tier were actually a little bit higher in Smith Falls than those comparators. So based on those combined results, staff are recommending to increase the mayor and council compensation and match the average. At this point, to leave per diems where they are, if we were to combine the two salaries, we, Smith Falls would be pretty much on target and to leave the mileage rate where it is and to implement these changes at the next term of council, which would start on November 15, 2026, so there'd be a month and a half of effect in '26 and then a full effect in 2027. We're looking for council to pass that, to move it forward and that to also direct, now this is not on here, but also direct staff to come back during the budget process with what those results would be, including Omer's dental and health and the increased honorarium as well. There is an amount that was within those numbers for the 4,200 estimate in '26 and 32,000 and '27 to compensate for that, but just to go back and make sure that we actually have the full amount for what the potential impact might be if all members of the future council were to have the dental and health benefits and to all have homers and to all have that, or at least two of them have that honorarium increase within that. So again, just to surmise for council to approve the increases for '26 and '27 and those other impacts that might impact the other areas like homers, dental health, honorarium and bring that forward within the budget talks.
Thank you. Council Robinson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by thanking staff for all the time and effort that has gone into making this report. I had hoped that increasing council remuneration might help attract more people to run in the 2026 election, but I'm not sure that this change will have that effect. Having said that, an increase is long overdue and I know that staff put a lot of time and resources into this and it's time to move forward. So as a result of that, I'll be supporting the proposed increase for the next election.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thumbs up? Council McKenna?
I'm supportive of the recommendation as well and thank you very much. My question is, and it's just, do you know what any municipalities are looking at their mayors with the new responsibilities under the strong mayor's power? More responsibility, more authority. Has that been, have other municipalities, do you know, are aware of any considering looking at compensation with that additional? Because usually when you're scoping your job, the job description was pretty basic. Strong mayor's powers changed a lot of that. I'm just, I'm not suggesting we do it, just wondering if you heard anything, is anybody looking at that?
Through the chair, yeah, there certainly would be impacts on the mayor and the increased workload, even though Smith Falls, a lot of the proposed changes and power given to the mayor have not been opted in. There are some that can't be opted out of, such as the budget process, so there will be increased amounts. I would, I can only guess and I'm sorry, but I don't have any more information, that it should be, it likely will be, but there hasn't been any documentation or communication at the treasurer's level. Normally there's discussions with, we have monthly discussions with Municipal Finance Officers Association and then we have a treasurer's email group where we email each other questions and bounce ideas off each other and that has not come up at this point, but I will certainly keep an eye on it and keep council updated if it does come up.
Thank you.
Mayor Pecan?
Sure. Thanks, Paul. I think like Council Robinson, I guess it's, when we look at it, we're hoping we create an environment that is going to incentivize more people to do it and reality is none of us are here because it's financially lucrative to do so, but I think at the same time, we know there are probably people in the community who would consider running for council, but they work full-time and they just don't have the flexibility. So in many cases, an increase is not going to change that unless the increase was such that it would enable them to leave their employment or whatever, right? So I think you always want to see a broader demographic, more younger people here, maybe more people are more diverse. The reality is, I guess, the structure is such that it primarily caters to people who are retired and have the time or people who are self-employed and have the flexibility. So I'll support the recommendation. In the end, it shows like maybe we're not that far off, although there's quite a range from top to bottom within all the goals that she selected to compare to. But in the end, the difference isn't, I don't think, as Council alluded to, is not going to make someone who was sitting on the fence decide they're going to run for council next term. Overall, I think it's, we've done this since 2011, I think, early 2011. It's been almost 15 years, so it's long overdue. Thank you.
Okay, agreed. So thanks for that and that will come, we need to do a motion to amend that bylaw, Carrie?
Correct.
We'll do that next council meeting. And just to be clear, when you mentioned homers and dental and that sort of thing, that'll come up at budget? That's not included in this?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct. It's not included in these numbers. Part of it is captured, but not the whole, so we'll come back with more information during the budget. The bylaw could reflect to, also without dollar values to compensate for homers and dental.
Yeah, so it's not present now, this is just changing what's already there, it's a different number.
Right, okay, thank you.
Need it. Committee board and external updates. So we have one correspondence item on our package and from municipal affairs and housing regarding Development Charges Act. Anybody have a comment? It's for our information, so I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Okay, so now we have a couple of in-camera items, so I'll entertain a motion to move in cameras. Council McGuire, Council Robinson, all in favor? We'll be back. Thank you. Two rising reports. First of all, committee met in camera to review camera minutes for adoption and the second, committee met in a closed door to discuss a personal matter about an identifiable individual. And that, those meetings, no notice of motions, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, the committee adjourned its proceedings at 6:45. What'd I do? Oh, 6:45 and stand so adjourned until the next duly called meeting. Oh, you want to ask a question?
Just if we could get back to, I really missed the trivia.
Do you have one?
No, but I would.
Wow.
Hopefully we can get back, thank you, that's all.
So we are meeting in probably two weeks, so you'll have a question in.
All right.
Whether it's council or committee.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. So the motion, the committee adjourned its meeting is at 6:45, stand so adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting. Moved by Council Robinson, seconded by Council McGuire, all in favor?